And that brings us to a very special report on new business. And we are joined tonight by two members of our education, the Byron Hills Education Foundation.
The two leaders.
The two leaders, the president and the chairman. And I'll turn it over to Bill for intro.
Yep. The reason this is on new business is the foundation is proposing to the board that they accept a gift for two, actually several, very significant grants. And those grants are very much in line with our district, our district curriculum initiatives, in particular, our technology initiatives. And these grants will update and renovate two labs. We will go from, very quickly, we will go from desktop-bound labs to labs that allow us to do, teach kids robotics, electronics, coding, quite a shift. In addition, they will help us to model some 21st century classrooms. Our classrooms throughout the district are pretty traditional, desks in rows. And these will allow us to experiment with a whole variety of different models for classrooms. And what that will do for us that's really significant is we don't have to select a model and do what other districts have done, hope that's the right one, and then buy new furniture for all your buildings. So these are great. And these are coming on top of a huge grant in the fall called Full Steam Ahead. These grants together, I think, by far represent the largest dollar contribution the foundation has ever made to the district, over a quarter of a million dollars. This is tremendous. And this allows us, you know, I'm always saying, we're going to stay under the tax cap, we're going to stay under the tax cap. This year, the tax cap's next to nothing. How are you going to do that and make any initiatives? This is going to allow us to really do some significant things and to keep pushing forward. So Jason and Lori, thanks for all of your work on this. And let me invite you to speak.
So I guess technically it has not approved or voted on yet, correct?
Correct.
You can hear it from here first. Then we'll decide.
You want to wait?
That's what you have to say.
Based on these comments.
Thank you for accepting our line.
So I'm Jason Burland. I am the chairman of the foundation. This is Lori Cantor, as you know, the president of the DHEF. And on behalf of the entire foundation, Lori and I wanted to thank you for considering and hopefully shortly approving, you know, these grants. And over the last few years, the district has obviously greatly enhanced its technology initiative. And we are just so pleased to be able to continue to partner with the district to bring the STEAM curricula to all the students in all of the schools in the district. And we think that this latest round of grants, the 21st century classrooms and the STEAM labs can really do that. So we really want to thank you for all you're doing.
And thank you and the Education Foundation for visionary leadership from our community and for our school district. And this, what I see here is that this year it totals $315,000. Pretty incredible. And it just goes to show you that our community that's contributing to this are very generous and very education-oriented. And again, the leaders from the Education Foundation from our community, incredible visionaries. So thank you.
Do we know what the running total is from the foundation? We got to be close to $3 million, as Ted?
From conception?
From 1994?
Over formally.
We're over $3 million.
It's closer to four.
It's three, in the 3.8 range, closer.
Incredible. Iris?
I remember many, many years ago, when Tom Harrison and other Byron Hills parents came up with this idea of having a foundation. And we all thought it was a good idea, but we didn't figure just how much of a good idea it was going to be. And when you look at foundations that are run by other school districts, some of them very, very good districts that we compare ourselves to, or they compare themselves to us and other school districts, realize how incredibly blessed Byron Hills is with the support of this community. As Bill said and other board members, it really enables us to do things that other districts only dream of. So I for one remain in awe of the amount of money that the foundation's able to raise for such worthy causes to better the education of our children, which is why the hell we did all this anyway. So on behalf of me anyway, I just couldn't be more excited to support these grants, especially now knowing what a solid process is in place to have these grants vetted and approved by the administration before they come to the board, which wasn't always so many, many years ago, but has been so for many years. And I think it's really made the relationship between the board and the foundation so much the better and such a mutually supportive one. So I congratulate you both, I congratulate your board, and I really congratulate the community on what they continue to do for the students at Byron Hills because it's really nothing short of superb and how well the students benefit from this. So I for one would move to accept these gifts with great gratitude.
Hey, can I have a motion to accept Byron Hills Education Foundation Fall 2015 Grants?
With great gratitude, so much.
And a second?
Second.
Any other comments?
I would just say that I think there's been an evolution in the foundation over time, in addition to the fact that you guys have done such a great job raising money. Because of the relationship with the administration and the ability to really have a longer lead time on just thinking through the right way to deploy the capital, it's so consistent with the mission of the district and with what's happening in all four schools that I think that the money's just going to be put to such good use. I think, maybe in the past, it hasn't been quite the same.
Goes back a number of years.
Right. And I think that's a great step in the right direction because it's just, it's money that will be invested in such a consistent way to the strategy of overall district, so donors should know that. And I think we all take great pride in working together.
Okay. All right. We have a motion.
And thanks to Tim and Andrew, who were critical to actually all the grants that are being approved.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Motion's on the table, all in favor with gratitude. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys do have the money for this, right?
My drawer.
Good night, thank you. With that, we now move to item nine, which is our special report budget hearing to review of proposed 2016, 2017 budget expenditures by administration for special services, technology, fine arts, curriculum, and instruction. And we are joined by our special services, Jill Boynton, our technology director, Andrew Taylor, and our fine arts, Deepak Marwa. And Tim will represent our curriculum. And I'll turn it over to you, Bill.
Sure. And we're officially opening budget hearing two.
We're officially opening budget hearing two in the, among the required five budget hearings. So, you know, I don't want to belabor it with a lot of blah blah. I want to thank the three directors and assistant director who's come tonight, really appreciate you coming out at night and hoping the boards better understand what your proposals are. Let me leave it there.
I'm up first? Okay. So the curriculum budget, there's a memo in your packet that outlines some details about the specific lines and some examples of how money's spent within those particular codes. I'll just give you a broad picture. It's that my budget supports two main areas, which is professional learning opportunities for teachers and administrators and program support, which could include web-based materials, could include other instructional materials, includes other instructional supplies and materials as well to support instruction and curriculum. You'll see on the budget, I have a 4.6% increase. That's the largest increase I've had since 2008. I've done a few incremental increases around the Common Core implementation and around APPR, but overall have managed to keep the curriculum budget relatively steady. But there's a few main reasons for that increase this year, the need for that increase. One is that we spend a large proportion of the curriculum budget in the summertime to pay teachers to come in and do curriculum work. And that's a great time that teachers love their network, is not interrupting the classroom, and they can really concentrate and do focus work during that time. So we do a lot during that time and also some technology training around that time as well for teachers. And this summer will be the, we had in our last BHTA contract, an increase in that contractual amount that we paid teachers. So I needed to compensate for that, so I didn't have to decrease the amount of time teachers spent, but we'll be paying teachers a little bit more in the summer based on the last contract negotiation. So that's driving the increase a little bit. Also with the technology and STEAM curriculum, providing a lot of staff development and materials and supplies to support the work that we're doing over the next few years around STEAM. What Andrew and I have really learned from studying the implementation so far is to see the impact in the classroom, is to provide professional development for teachers. And so I want to make sure we have that support in place for them. And the final thing is you will see a new code for new program materials. I'm anticipating some materials for new programs. For example, next year when we do a K-5 math study, we'll be looking, we'll have to purchase a new program, whether we phase it in over the course of the year. But that'll be an example of some new program materials. In the past, I used to budget, I used to sort of borrow money from other codes where I had savings, and I think it's more prudent to have a code directed toward new program implementation. I anticipate some new programs in science and social studies in the future as well as the curriculum's changing. So that's sort of the big picture of my budget and what's driving it right now. And I'm confident that we do have the funds to support our ambitious efforts going forward.
Tim, what about as far as the Common Core, AKA, I guess, the learning standards as they're changing?
Sure.
Is there money in here to anticipate those changes that are coming?
Sure, there will be. And that, we might not feel that for a couple of years. So, you know, they'll be doing the study next year and then the year after making some revisions. So it's going to be at least three years out for that piece.
Okay.
So I think between looking at the math study, doing some social studies work and science work following that will be the Common Core and the BOSI.
Questions?
The only question, Tim, just to make sure I understand the timing of this math and then the social studies and science.
Sure.
Is the beginning of all of that in here, or is, are all three of those things not next year?
Yeah, not all next year.
Not all next year.
There's money set aside for, you know, we've been doing science work for a few years. For example, we've had a staff developer working at WAPIS for the past three years on integrating some of the next-generation science standards in the science units. I have that in a contractual line, so money set aside to hire consultants for that through those C's. It's relatively inexpensive and you'll get any back on that as well. So we have some good staff developers through those C's that work with us. So this is something I'm anticipating a little bit of new fund with the math program. We may do pilots next year, so I want to have money aside to purchase materials for that.
Other questions, comments?
Thank you.
It's important.
It's worth it.
Thank you.
Andrew, Tim?
He has his own PowerPoint.
I was actually going to have a little.
You was going to say, yes, high-tech, isn't it?
I thought that might be cheating.
Then we know where your budget goes.
So in technology, we have really four focus areas that we're focusing on in our vision and planning for the year. And that is technology itself, looking at the infrastructure and hardware, resources that we have inside the district, looking at the software that we're purchasing and ensuring that it's being used and monitoring software uses, and the content as well with the technology, professional development, both online and face-to-face professional development for staff. And as Tim said, we work very closely in choosing those professional development opportunities and presenting them to the staff. And then this year, we're focusing on spaces, and that's kind of was the grant that you just received from the foundation, is to really think about 21st century learning spaces and what we might need to do differently to get students really thinking about engineering and design within the classroom and within our labs. So our budget really focuses in five areas that support those four initiatives, and that's looking at instructional technology, staff, hardware and software, professional development, maintenance, and supply, and the BOSI's expenditures. Under staff, that includes our building technology consultants, our BTCs, computer aids in every building. We are adding, or replenishing, a computer aid at HCC this year too, which was eliminated a few years ago, and we're putting that back in to support all the technology initiatives that we're, that we're rolling out. As well as tech staff supporting our network and infrastructure, and then myself as well. Hardware and software, this is really the maintenance hardware and software, the things we use throughout the year to keep things running and fix things as they break, as well as software, which is, we've, in the past years, we've bundled software, so most of it sits at the district level so that we can purchase across buildings and get some economy of scale instead of having it sit in the buildings and have much more, smaller value. And then looking at our IPA, which is our large purchase of technology that we do every summer, which is an installment purchase agreement that allows us to spread the cost over multiple years and get BOSI's aid back on those funds. And then in professional development, professional development inside the technology budget, it looks relatively small if you're just looking at contractual and conferences funds, but we actually have a lot of embedded professional development as well through the use of our BTCs, who are embedded consultants with teachers, helping them on a day-to-day basis in utilizing the technology, as well as the professional development that we draw from as a district as a whole through Tim's department, and also some of the BOSI services that we subscribe to as well. So professional development really is spread throughout, not just this budget, but also other budgets in the district. Maintenance and supplies really looks at the small parts and supplies we need to run the department. And then BOSI's, a lot of our budget lies within the BOSI's code. And this is really, we could spend a long time just looking at this area in general. This is where we look at our wide area, our local area network support, our higher-level senior technical support staff, this is our bandwidth costs, our pipes that run from every building and then back to the rig for data storage. It includes our data warehousing, our nightly backups. All of that is encompassed within the BOSI's cuser. So our financial focuses are really looking at appropriate technology and appropriate resources, looking at, making sure our infrastructure is strong to be able to support continued growth of the district so that as we add more Chromebooks and add more technology, we're making sure that we have the bandwidth and we have the network to back up all of those devices that we're adding, as well as looking at professional development and really focusing on the four Cs and how we can use the four Cs within the classroom and helping teachers really realize the use of four Cs in design and engineering, that sort of thinking skills that go along with it. The fourth one is really in gray because the interactive whiteboards is really not in this budget, although part of it might come from our IPA this summer. Most of that is coming from our Smarter Schools Bond, which is a separate funding that we're applying to the state for. We've already, we've already been allotted the funds, but we have to apply for it, and there's a process. And most of that, that area will be taken from the Smarter Schools Bond, which is $330, $3,000 that we're receiving from the state. And then fifth is looking at the lab spaces and how we can rethink classroom and lab spaces in this new environment. So what does this mean for Byron Hills? It really means that we're making sure teachers are prepared, our network is strong, we're focused on the 21st century curriculum, we're future-focused, we're looking at spaces, and really, the last bullet I think is important one is really we're being looked at now as a leader in technology across the region, and people are saying some of the things that we're talking about, the things that we're doing here, as really being models of the way we should think about technology and integration in the classroom.
Any questions? The IPA, can you talk a little bit about the, what's happened to that over time? What, how some of the assumptions have changed, what's in there? You know, way back at the beginning of my tenure on the board, it was always an annual issue, oh, we're replacing computers in every building once every four years, and once we get through all the buildings, we start again. There were five desktops per each classroom, and that was a big discussion point. But now, and that was all done through the IPA and through the BOSI, so we get aid on it. But that's really gone, you know, I don't know what's in there now, and I don't know whether the assumptions underlying it are that we need to cycle this technology faster or that we can eventually get to a point where we can start saving money.
Well, we're, we're still in a growth phase right now. We're actually still adding some more Chromebooks to the overall infrastructure. The high school has asked for some additional cards for next year. So this is probably the last year, maybe one more year of a little bit more growth in the saturation of Chromebooks within the, in the district. We focused last year's IPA, which was a little bit larger than the previous IPAs because we were supplementing foundation funds to make sure that we were able to go one-to-one three through, three through eight this year. So that last year, a large proportion of the IPA was focused on growing the number of Chromebooks, going one-to-one, and also making sure that our network closets were well saturated with battery backups and making sure that they had the capacity to run the tools that we were putting on it. One of the things that we were noticing in the previous year was that the access points that we were putting were drawing a lot of power from those closets that we weren't really ready for. So we actually rewired all the closets with higher voltage battery backups to make sure that we could support that. That was last year. This year, we're going to do a little bit more growth with the Chromebooks. We have a couple small network things, but I think this is the last year that we really need to focus on that. And then we're going to start to get into a four-year replenishment cycle so that the ones we started two years ago, now the Chromebooks we had two years ago, will be on your three-year this coming year. So we're going to need to start thinking about replacing them in a year or two years out. And a four-to-five-year replenishment cycle is sort of what we're planning for the Chromebooks. But we are also this year upgrading some desktops, a very small amount in labs, a couple labs that are still needed for traditional programs and office spaces. Most of the computers in the building offices are aging out, and they're already past end of life, and so we're going to be replacing those.
So when you get to saturation with the Chromebooks and you start replacing them, are these are all leased from, through BOSI's, so we just turn it a bunch and we get a bunch? Or do we have to, or do we own these things and have to dispose of them somehow?
No, they're, we can turn them into BOSI's.
Beautiful.
Yeah, we turn them into BOSI's. And I don't think that we'll do a large swap-off like that, but there is going to be a large number that are, you know, just need to be replaced because they've got cracks and things. And they're used every single day by students. When you have one-to-one, these kids rely on them, use them every day. We are noticing some breakage that we're looking at getting some sleeves for them to make sure, the middle school especially, the middle schoolers are, they're transporting from class to class. So we're noticing that we're looking at getting some carrying cases for them to mitigate some of the damages that we're having. Which is, which in the scope of the number of Chromebooks we have is still relatively small, and it does not warrant us looking at any type of warranties or replacement insurance because the cost just doesn't.
You know, kids put them in a backpack, treat them like a book, and toss their backpack and, you know.
Yeah, it's a learning curve. So we really do got to teach them that this is not a book, you know, you need to hold and carry it a little bit differently. And so we have a couple screens a month that we're, we need to replace, but in the scope of things, it's not significant.
And how's our Wi-Fi and our networks, are they running to capacity and?
We're going to increase next year. We're currently at 300 megabytes of our bandwidth. We're going to go to 400 next year. We have the capacity to go up to a gig with our current infrastructure. I don't think we'll need a gig for any near time. But I think we'll probably be settling around 400 or 500 max because we are peaking every once in a while on our bandwidth. It's not consistent though.
And just to add, I guess a couple of years ago, there was, you know, the bandwidth increase. So large infrastructure around the network is nothing, what we have in place now looks pretty good for, I don't know, what's the upgrade cycle?
Five years.
Right. What's the upgrade cycle on that large, you know, more capital-intensive, you know?
We should get a little bit longer time than that. I mean, we, the wiring is in place, and we're not going to really need to upgrade the wiring in a long, in a long time. We should get seven to, you know, you don't know right now, but I would say seven to 10 years, somewhere in that range, we should be able to get out of our network, access points, our switches. We're looking at them and figuring out where we need to replace it though so that we're not, we don't come to a, a place where we have to replace the entire infrastructure at one point.
There's nothing, I guess the point, without getting specific on budgetary constraints around that, is there anything out there that, you know, you feel is going to be a major technological constraint or capital-intensive over the next several years outside of some of the stuff that's, you know, presented?
No, not that I can see right now. We seem to be in a really good position right now. We're always monitoring our bandwidth to make sure that we're getting all the bandwidth that we need, that we're getting the support, it's not being bottlenecked anywhere. So we do a lot of monitoring and holding up our bandwidth providers to testing and making sure that we're getting what we need in that area.
Sure.
But right now, I think we're in a very good spot as far as our network, our infrastructure. Really, right now, what we need to start looking at is a replenishment cycle. And some of, the Chromebooks are a little bit hard to create a, I know it's going to be five years because they're newer devices. So we're looking at a four-year replenishment, where it might be a five-year replenishment, it might be a six-year. We don't really know right now, but a four-year is a conservative estimate. We'll get at least four years out of them, and we'll start working from there, then as we start using them, and we'll, we'll have a better understanding of the lifespan of them. But I think four years is a conservative estimate, and I think we're in a good shape right now to be able to do that.
You had mentioned that our district is looked at now sort of as the leaders in this area of technology. I don't think we ever used to be that, right? I mean, it used to be more that we were cautious.
To the contrary.
I'm not saying that we're not cautious, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying, what has changed? Why has that, we're kind of perceived as?
One of the things that we've been really focusing on, and I think Tim and I really addressed this a lot, is we don't want to just buy things to buy things, and we really make sure that there's professional development supporting everything that we do. And so that when we, when we go to do something, we're really making sure that teachers are at a point of readiness to be able to make it be successful. Because the worst thing about technology is, oh, here's a piece of technology, go use it, that never works. So we really want to make sure that teachers have the capacity to use it, and we're being thoughtful about how we're actually purchasing the technology. For example, the STEAM initiative, we're not just integrating a lot of tools, we're actually focusing on creating a K-12 scope and sequence. That's something that a lot of districts say that they have or want, but they're not really working a lot towards getting that exact scope and sequence. And what we're really focused on, we're not going to have it by September, but we're working out over the next year or two, we're going to have a well-drafted understanding of what types of STEM-related activities are happening at every single grade level utilizing these sort of, these advanced tools.
That's one of the things that I have to say that I've always appreciated with this district as far as technology is concerned, is that we've never just jumped in and taken on a new technology for technology's sake and have curriculum, you know, fill in later on. It's always been curriculum, curriculum and learning-driven, and it's good to see that that's still.
Rooms are a good example of that. The rooms, it's easy to say, let's just create a really nice room and make it nice and fancy, and then hopefully people use it.
And figure out how to use it later, right.
But our approach is really have been, what is the need of, need of the building, the need of the teachers that are going to be utilizing it? And then from that point, creating a groundswell of, here's the types of tools you might really focus on your needs. And I think that's a different approach to say that, you know, we're not quickly buying stuff because that's really not meeting the needs of the teachers. We're really focusing on how it's going to be best impact.
Great.
Just one other quick question. We talked about the Chromebooks and then talked about the infrastructure. The other, I guess, big item out there, smart boards that are aging. How do you think about that, or do we have a lot of smart boards that are failing? Are they still in okay shape? And I know you've experimented with some other, you know, technology to potentially replace smart boards in some classrooms, but how does that factor into thinking about budget over the next, you know, couple of years?
We do have a lot of smart boards that are starting to age out, and we're doing some maintenance on them this year. We've been really focusing this year on piloting some different options out there. We piloted some LED TVs with touch Chromebooks. We, this past several weeks, we've had Promethea boards that have been circulated around to all the building, as well as the new smart LED TV boards. And so this next week, we're going to be collecting data from all the teachers. all the teachers on what features they saw from these different options are going to best meet their needs, and then we're going to use that to make some decisions. And so we may not be able to replace all the boards in September or throughout next year, but I think we'll be able to get a significant number replaced, which will give us some smart boards to have for parts and for replacements. And then over the next two years, we should be able to replace all of the boards. Depending, there's a large variance in the pricing of each of those options. So depending on what feedback we get is going to depend on whether we do this in a one-year plan or a three-year plan based on the results of our data we're going to collect.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Bye now. Joe Boynton, Special Services. Welcome.
Thank you. Special Services encompasses a lot of areas, and I thought it would be a good start tonight to go through the scope of that review to talk to you about how students become students with disability. I notice on your agenda, there's always information that you receive from our office that is from CSE. So I'll go through a couple of acronyms, I'll talk through, process through about how students do become classified. And for our budget on the screen, there's a 2.6% increase. The areas that are up there right now are salaries, equipment, contractual, other, BOSI services, and materials and supplies. And once I go through certain areas about program, you'll see there is a fluctuation, usually in special education, and it goes back to those main needed services and programs that are recommended for students based on, committee on special education recommendations. So under special education or special services, we are responsible for students from preschool right up to grade 12, which also can be for students up to the age of 21. They are entitled to stay in school until, through the school year in which they turn 12. Under our office also is, it's called ENL Now, which is English as a Second Language. It's now called English as a New Language, ENL. The school nurses fall under our office, although they report to the building principals and they provide direct support to students in their buildings. Homeless, if any students come to the district that are homeless, that also is part of what we do in our office. And contracted occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy services, vision services, hearing services, which could be itinerant services or itinerant vision services based on students' needs. Now, you probably are wondering how students even become classified or student with special needs. This can happen in a number of ways. First of all, there could be a suspicion that the student has a learning issue, or there's a disability, or something is, you know, amiss with what's happening with them in school. We can receive referrals from professionals in the building, the instructional support team in the building, which is made up of staff in the school building. We can receive referrals directly from parents. They can write letters to us requesting that their child be evaluated. We could also receive referrals from doctors. Once we get that referral in our office, we process that information. We may have conversations with the building staff and building principal to determine have they tried any interventions at the building level. And then if we are set to proceed with the referral, we send information home to the parents. We cannot proceed without consent to evaluating from the parents. Once we receive that in our office, on two sides of the house for preschool, once we receive that consent, we only have 30 days to complete evaluations and come to the table as a committee for preschool special education. And those are non-responsible providers that conduct those evaluations. Those are agencies on the outside because we work with the county for preschool. On the school-age side of the house, there are providers. There are school psychologists, the contracted speech providers, OT, if the student needs evaluations in those areas. So we get the consent from the parent, and then we have 60 days from the date that's received in our office for our staff to do the evaluations, write the report, and then we are responsible for putting together the meeting. And the meeting consists of, you see it says CSE is Committee on Special Education. There's a chairperson, well, the CSE chairperson. There are mandated members in the group. You have a special education teacher or gen and teacher. The parents are part of that team. And the objective is for that team, the group of people at the Committee on Special Education, to determine based on evaluations, is the student eligible to be classified as a student with a disability or not? If they are, then we have to, of course, through this whole process, follow the Commissioner's Part 200 regulations. But then there are 13 classifications or categories that we would determine based on how the student is functioning. After that, committee writes the individual education plan. And when you see that on your agenda, that's what you're approving. Either they were initial referral meetings, they could have been program reviews. We're also required every three years to conduct a re-evaluation for those students. So if you add up all the students in our district right now, we have 324 students that are classified with a disability. Seventy-four students are preschoolers with disabilities. So that's a lot of meetings because everyone's required to have one a year, which is a lot. If you, if we look at programs that we provide and you hear LRE, LRE is Least Restricted Environment. So the committee's responsibility at those, you know, particular meeting, let's say for an initial for a student, it's the committee's responsibility, and we're bound to that as well, to provide mandated services in the least restricted environment. We start with the continuum of services, and we look at regular education or general education with maybe lay-in services or resource room. And then we look to see, okay, the student based on their needs, do they need maybe a consultant teacher model, or we have a special education teacher push into their classroom? Maybe it's the integrated co-teacher, you've been hearing about that. Or we have a special education teacher and a general education teacher, team teaching, either, you know, for a good part of the day in the elementary school, or it could be for one academic subject in the secondary model. We also have students that might need special classes, and most of our special classes are for the ungraded students. They're like an eight-to-one ratio, eight students to one teacher. We have 12 one for the younger students, and then we have 15 one, which is typically what you hear in the middle school and high school, up to 15 students, special needs, and one special education teacher. We also have some students, there are 20 students that are placed out of district. Those programs could be in a neighboring school district, in a consulting district. We have students that are placed in BOSI's programs because their needs require them to have a certain level of support that we don't provide. We also have students that are called tuition-paying students, meaning that their home district has sent a referral to my office or to our office to say, hey, do you have a program that would meet our students' needs? Let's say, for example, that Rye City sends a referral for a student here to come to the ungraded program at the high school or one of the programs at our school. We have a process in our office. We take in the referral, send the information to our school psychologist in the building, to the special education teacher in that building. They review that information. They go and observe the student in their home school. Then they come back. They let us know, you know, if the student might be a viable candidate for our program. Then we contact the director of the special services office in the sending district. They in turn contact the parents, and the parents then come and bring the student here, and they do what's called an intake. They come to look at the program, they come to see what we have to offer in their environment. And then if everything continues to move in that direction, we send an acceptance letter to the sending district. Sending district then sets up the CSE. It's their committee on special education that sends the student here. It's not ours. Though we have a few students, we have four this year, and their district's going to tuition for their students to come here. Students are in the flexible support program, and we have two students that are ungraded language communications class in the high school. There is a difference also once students, let's say they attain their goals. The committee on special education can also make a recommendation that a student becomes declassified. Students that are declassified, committee on special education can recommend maybe supports for the remainder of the school year. Let's say if the committee met today on a student, they could say, okay, the student's been in a resource room, and they have permanent modifications and test accommodations. Committee can make the recommendation for the student to continue that for the remainder of the year. But the one thing that remains in place for those students through the entire rest of the time that they're at school until they graduate are their test accommodations. So that's another important piece for declass. There is a difference between students that are classified and students that have five or four accommodation plans. Five or four accommodation plans are for students that have a major life function that's being impacted by their disability. Typically, if you think of the student, that might be the student with rheumatoid arthritis or the student that's a diabetic. The two areas that you look at in five or four accommodation plans are access. Can the student get to school on time? Like the diabetic who sugars might be too high, maybe they can't come in right away in the morning, they have to adjust it, maybe they need to leave a little earlier. But it's an access and academic are the two problems that you look at for five or four accommodation plans. And the main gist of five or four accommodation plans is to really level the playing field for those students. There are students that have test accommodations in their five or four plans as well.
And are the five or four plans, sometimes those are reversed as well, too? It could be for a temporary situation?
They can be, but typically for a five or four accommodation plan, the student will have that. But any, any of the students, a student that has a five or four accommodation plan, a student that has an IEP, and even a student that has English as a second language, for those students, it's mandated and they have to test out. But for the other two for five or four and IEP, the committee can reconvene at any time. So for the ESL students, we do have seven students in the district right now that receive ESL services. We have students that receive transition services, which means they're phasing out of requiring ESL services. And we have two students that are served in Tarrytown in a bilingual standalone only program because we don't have a bilingual program in our district. And those services are mandated services as well. And in the past two weeks, we had a few families that moved into the district, and we're going through the process with our ESL teacher here determining whether or not the students require those mandated services. They do, they do a strong language questionnaire. They give the student a lab R to test, it's a language test. They look at their reading, their writing, and their oral communication. And then there's a determination made, what level does the student have for ESL services? And how many minutes are they required to receive? And students that are at the beginner level, they require 360 minutes of ESL services a week. So that's another area under our office.
Can I digress for a second?
Yes.
Because somebody was, in another district, was telling me a story that they had, in one year, 75 students show up and needed these services, oftentimes in high school, and they were completely unexpected. You know, that number was unexpected. They could throw a district, you know, just off the rails.
It can. I know that in past experience, like in, over the course of maybe like a three-month time, you know, you could have an influx of 20 students that move into your district, and some of those students can have a requirement based on their last IEP because that's what we have to go by. Let's say they were, you know, in another district or in another state that, you know, looked at their IEP, and they require intensive therapeutic supports. That can happen to you. It's unlikely that you have that many students. It is likely, though, that you can have students, if you have that many students that move in, that either have a five or four accommodation plan or an IEP. But the part about, do they, you know, what type of service do they need? Is it a therapeutic support type of program? Is it something that's more intensive than what we have to offer here? And that's where it is, there's that fluctuation because you just, you know, you just really don't know always, you know, who's going to come in the door. But we are developing our programs. We do have the continuum of services where obviously, you know, with your support and looking at the budget, looking to increase the integrated co-teach so that we have it in eighth grades, and our students will have it in sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Sorry, what was that you just said?
The integrated co-teacher for eighth grade. So looking at programs and looking at least restrictive environment, which is what we need to do, are we providing supports and services to our students in general education, in general education class with a special education teacher co-teaching?
Was that the, I see a jump of 105% in its ESL teacher HGC. Could that be what that is? Sorry, I have to specify. I don't know if it's...
Is that the co-teacher?
For the co-teacher, yeah. Is that what it is? Okay.
Yes. But over the course of the last year, I really have focused on our programs here in the district, looking at our staff, looking at professional development for the integrated co-teacher, looking at the continuum of services for our programs, looking at our staff, the usage of our staff, the aides, looking at our nursing services, you know, do we have the proper amounts of supports in place? Looking at processes and procedures, are we following the Commissioner's regulations? You know, I've put some different processes and procedures in place as well. Looking at related services, the related services for the students in our district, as you know, they are contracted services for occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy. So we're going to continue to look at that. But the committee on special education for students makes those recommendations, and we have contracted staff that are part of the committee that make those recommendations as well. So again, back to the special services overall budget, there is a little bit of fluctuation when you look at programs that students might need as far as, you know, the BOSI services, or depending on, like students, they might move in and out. Like we might have a student that's in and out of district placement, and their family might decide to leave and move, but then someone else might need that level of support. And it also depends on what the committee recommends based on the related services that are also attached to that. And I think that's about it. I gave you a lot of information, but I gave you background information because I thought it was important for you.
That's very helpful.
Thank you, yeah.
Just one question on, there are students that we send out to other districts because we don't have the programs in-house that would be most appropriate for them. And then there are students that we get from other districts where we have programs that are great that they may not have. Is there anything that you see on the horizon with the dual goals of trying to create the best experience for students and being financially responsible, where there are programs that we have that you'd want to enlarge to attract other students from other districts or vice versa? Are there any programs that we should be sending, you know, kids out? Anything?
I think the two areas, we now have ungraded programs, and because of the cohort at the elementary at Coleman, we for the next year are not looking to have like a language communications class, but we do have that. Right now, we have it there. We will have that at Wompis, at the middle school and the high school. That program across the board in the entire district has done really well. And the students in our high school program, we are focusing on employability skills for them, right, being, you know, working in the community. So I would like to look towards expanding that program. And we actually got a referral for a student recently from a neighboring school district, and we're about done with that process, so we'll be accepting that student into the program in the high school. So to continue to focus on that program and expand that in each of the schools, and then once we have another cohort, for the little ones coming in from preschool, certainly have it back because it really is helpful for the four teachers, too, because they have the continuing to cross. And looking at other programs out of district, maybe for our students, you know, the more medically fragile kids, you know, you look to see, do you have cohorts? Do we have cohorts of Byron Hill students that are in another district where there are small groupings? And it's really tough because our district is not really large, so we may have Singleton students that have a very specific need and are in another program. So I like that we have the continuum of the eight-one-two ungraded program here in our district. I would like to, you know, continue to expand that or fill the seats.
Same question about contractual services. I know we spend an enormous amount of money for, you know, doing right by the kids, but we're also obligated under state law to provide all of these services that... Have you done an analysis, at what point can we hire somebody in-house and save money?
I have not done an analysis, but that certainly has been on my radar since I started a year ago. It's something that, we went through the RFP process spring of last year, and I've only been here a couple of months. It is something that I want to continue to really look at and do that analysis and say, these are the services that are recommended for our students. Staff as a whole are looking at that, too. You know, do we require the pushing services and really, really with an eagle eye looking at the supports that are being recommended?
Yeah, I would appreciate if we get, you know, that kind of, my sense is that we are employing full-time a lot of third-party consultants. We send them enough business so that they are 100% full up, and we're paying them X dollars an hour. Now, we're not paying benefits and things like that, but it's got to be cheaper to bring it in-house.
And if you have your own occupational therapist, let's say, then, you know, you would have more control over what their schedule is. Right now, with the contracted staff, sometimes they want to work part-time, so we have multiple people working for an outside agency, and we want to have a meeting on what to, so we wouldn't say we can't because maybe they're working in another district. So for us, too, it's really important to have our own staff because we have more control over what they're doing and where they're going.
And it's consistency of who that student is seeing, too. You know, well, we're going to get you the services, but it's going to be four different people over the course of the next month.
It is one of the areas that we continue to, continue to work to.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess, last week on the, you know, at 325 students or so, what's called that 12, 10, 12% of the overall population, right, of our district. Has that been pretty much stable over the last, say, five years or something? Do we know that?
It's grown a little bit.
It's growing. It's nine percent, eight percent, nine percent, 10%, 11%. This is the first time I've heard 12. Is it really 12?
Well, I'm thinking 325 students on 2500.
But we have a big goal this year in those numbers in preschool. I mean, it's almost...
Yeah, of those numbers... Yeah, of those numbers, remember Jill said seventy-nine?
Okay.
Yeah.
Of preschool. And that's happening, I don't know.
We don't classify.
Across the state, across the country, and I think that's an awareness issue and not necessarily a, an anomaly in that demographic. I think people are just more and more aware of the services that they're entitled to before they start public school. I mean, there's a whole industry out there on this.
Some of the successes around early intervention too, I think are big motivators.
And that's money well spent too, honestly.
Absolutely. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Jill and Karen Kushner, I should say is here as well too, thank you for your support in this as well. And if we exist a finer, it seems you have no.
I'm up.
You're up.
Good evening, the curtains are.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much.
This is your first budget for us, right?
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to it.
You're supposed to sing a song.
I didn't hear that.
See, I did warm up before I got here.
Before you start. Sure. Beauty and the Beast, fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, outstanding.
What a performance.
Thank you very much.
We're so proud of those kids and the whole department, whatever. It was just one of the better things I've seen in the Byron Hill stage. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
What a first musical.
They did a beautiful job. I was very proud of the work that they've done there too.
Then ask me what musical should be next year. I'll, I'll wait for that email.
We already have some ideas, we can talk.
No, but seriously, it was a wonderful performance.
Thank you.
Well done.
One of the first things you ever told me was, you know, I'm glad you're here, just make sure you don't do a Disney musical. Right away. Right away.
Now you got the hang of this district. Well done.
All right, thank you. Well, as the newbie here at the table, really a lot of the information that I'm going to present to you here in the budget is really based upon just a few months of having been in the position. So a lot of the things that I'm going to say were actually based upon the fact that I inherited a budget that was, I think, really, really well crafted by my predecessor, Joy Varley, and approved by you and the community. So if you would allow me, I'm just going to go over and kind of go over a quick overview of what we're doing in the music and art program here throughout the district. And then I'll quickly go through some of the variances that you see there, but I think it's clear that there aren't that many. So first, the budget that I've inherited has really allowed me to support instructional goals in both the music and art class from Coman Hill all the way up to the high school to continue some of the art enrichment opportunities that we've been able to provide. Also, it's been able to help us provide ample supplies in art and music, which include a lot of supplies in the elementary and in the elementary levels and into the middle school and into some of the technological things that we need in the high school program. Also with the expensive instruments, sheet music and instrument supplies such as reeds and those things, they come up like crazy. It's also helped me to provide students with the opportunity to find out-of-district opportunities. This year so far, we've had a number of students present in the Armac Outdoor Art Show, the Allstate Music Festival up in Rochester, part of the New York State School Music Association Conference, the All, Area Allstate, which is for high school students, which present at, which presents at SUNY Purchase, the All County Festival for our elementary and middle school students. And another one is the Young Artists at the Cottone Museum of Art. And they've been doing beautifully. Our students are really showing their work, both music and in art throughout the district and throughout the county. As I said earlier, the budget itself is somewhat similar. Most of the changes are due to salary increases. So for example, in the art department, some of the things that we're doing there are that students from Coman Hill all the way up to HCC are still being offered general art courses, which are project-based and give students the opportunity to create original artwork. And a nice component that I'm starting to see now is that I think it's really because of the conversations we've had based on the inquiry question, that the students themselves are now starting to question, what is art? So as I go into these, to the younger schools, I, one of the things that I've really noticed, particularly in Wampis for this particular one, is that the teachers are not only just giving them something to work on, but also having them explain why they think that this is art. They're giving them historical context on things from ancient Greece and say, well, this was something that they used to transport oil. Is this art? And the kids are like, no, it's just a container. But then they would say, well, if you were to find this on the street now, where do you think you'd see it? And they'd say, well, in a museum. And all of a sudden they're like, huh, okay. So one of the things that I thought was interesting was a fourth grade student, the fourth grade class was asked to write what they think art is. And if I could share this with you, a student wrote, what is art? Art is everything. For example, furniture, clothing, buildings. Art is beautiful, art is fun, art is creative, and you can share what you believe in through art, which I thought was great for a fourth grader to understand, that it's not just crayons and construction paper, but it's something that really exists all around. Moving up to the high school program, like I think that we have a wonderful program where every student takes the prerecorded course of studio art and then they follow a sequential program which ends in five, one of, well, five NCAP courses. And right now we have AP 3D. This is our first time this year offering the AP 3D course, AP Art Studio, AP Graphic Design, AP Photography and Advanced Film Workshop, which is the end of our film sequence there too. In the music budget, our instruments have been replaced and services needed, so there really isn't much need to purchase a lot of things at this point. And it puts us in a very good position to make sure that the instrumental students and the program itself continues to be strong. The only increase that you can see in music is under contractual and other services, and that is an increase for HCC's vocal music program, which is one of our biggest programs, particularly in that building where our teacher, our vocal music teacher there teaches about three hundred students just in the choir program itself. So in a way to support the work that she's doing there, we've hired an accompanist to come in and work with her for about two to three days a week to also play her concerts. There's, there's a consistency there too, at this point, between the accompanist and her. The accompanist herself is also somebody who has worked in this business for quite a while, so there's a support system there. And it's really provided the teacher at HCC the opportunity to not only focus on classroom management issues, because you can imagine with sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety students in a class, sometimes classroom management will take over, but now she's really starting to provide specific instruction, instruction that she can really give to the students based from music points of view instead of, hey, I need you to stand here and there. So it's been very positive and she's excited about the things that are happening. And I've seen even since September, a substantial amount of growth. So that is the big picture as far as the small increases that I've provided there.
Thank you. Questions?
I, I didn't check the line. Are you asking for additional funds for Bobcat TV?
Only to increase salaries for the consultants that work there.
You're going to talk.
I'm going to.
Just have reception for that, yeah.
Okay.
What's, in terms of the number of students, holding steady, going up or going down in terms of the music program?
Well, we have a hundred percent participation in HCC nearly.
Well, if you count, if you count.
Right.
If you count choir.
Well, choir band and orchestra, every student has to take music there.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm inquiring about band and orchestra, kids who play an instrument. Is that, is that, because that's optional. Is that number going up or going down or holding steady?
Between sixth, from sixth grade all the way to eighth grade, it seems to stay mostly steady. And the, and same with the choir program, which is getting better and better. The drop-off point where I'm starting to, to look at is the transition between eighth and ninth grade.
Right.
Where I think we go from that having about a hundred percent participation in HCC to about forty percent.
Right, but that forty percent number, is that, is that number, because I think once they start in ninth grade, that forty percent number stays steady through graduation.
Yes, yes.
Is that forty percent higher or lower or the same as it's always been? That's the, the trend that I'm asking about.
Oh, at this point, it's been the same. And I'd like to see that get better. My belief is that if we can get students to take some of the ensemble courses right at the beginning in freshman year, that they'll stay and that'll actually happen. But it's, I think, one of the things with the program at HCC into the high schools, it's the first time that they have an opportunity to escape music, you know?
Yes.
And they have these courses that are really specific, like drawing, painting, always. So it's an opportunity for them to say, hey, I've had music since four, since kindergarten, maybe I really want to delve into this, something for me to really work on.
And are there opportunities for the high schoolers to get back into it if they decide or is it by that time it's beyond them, that they drop off, say freshman year, because they want to go the art route?
Right. I think there are opportunities that we haven't looked into in the past. In choir, that happens quite often because the choir program really doesn't have the same amount of skill set that's needed in order for them to continue. One of the things that I'd like to do moving forward is to see if we can change the way that we name the incoming classes, which are, which are called a concert band and concert orchestra. Right now they're called ninth grade, but I don't think that there's a need for that. I think it can be a place where if a student comes in for ninth grade and doesn't take a music class, that in their tenth grade, they can come back into that concert, which is the entry level group and for there not to be a stigma about being with freshmen.
Makes sense.
Right.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. So now I'm going to go to nine point six, which is just the budget steps from here, just to let the public know.
Oh, well, I'm supposed to do public information services.
Oh, that was after it, but.
Is it after?
Well, I don't know, that's why we could, we could change it around. We could follow the agenda.
I think.
Public communications to nine point seven. It does make sense. Yes. We will let you leave us now.
You're welcome.
You don't have to stay for the rest. We could figure out this agenda without you here.
Take a quick break and.
Good to see you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You wanted to do this, because it does make sense. I know, it's just following the agenda. There's a couple of things.
Special ed report was very good.
It does seem we're all at the same rate.
Let's just follow this. Let's just follow this.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Let's just follow this.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, right? As long as it all gets covered. Okay. Okay, so I am just going to, I am just going to reiterate the budget steps from here, which is just nine point six. So today is budget hearing two. Next week, Tuesday, March twenty-second, is budget hearing three. And again, at that budget hearing, that is the second and last opportunity for the public to have any input as far as additions or deletions to the budget, very important. And at that budget, we are going to talk specifically about transportation, athletics.
Operations and maintenance.
Operations and maintenance. And revenue.
Yes.
And revenue.
Revenue.
Revenue, yeah. We have to find out how we're paying for this. Okay. And then on April twelfth is budget hearing four. And at that point, it's pretty buttoned up. And by April twenty-sixth is adoption of the budget by the Board of Education. May third is a mandated budget hearing five, where the community is given the, the budget. And the vote is on May seventeenth at HC Crittenden, open to everybody from six-thirty to nine o'clock as long as you're over eighteen, if you have to live in the district for a year.
Not be a felon.
And not be a felon.
And you do not have to be a registered voter.
Right, it's thirty days.
So if you have, if you have a teenager who's eighteen, lives in your household.
You have to live here thirty days, right.
Thirty days, not a year, thirty days. So just come in and vote, your, your name will be on the list, you, show ID?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And we are going to pop back to nine point seven, which is public communications. And Bill, you're going to talk to that as part of the budget from public communications?
Yeah, this is a relatively small budget. The only, we foresee doing all of the same programs next year that we do now, you know, this includes things like Bobcat TV, Spectrum, Budget brochure. We anticipate doing all of that the same, no big increases or changes, put in a little money so later in the year if we decide, historically, we've given Bobcat TV consultants the same percentage that teachers get, which would be like one point something. So we put that money in in case we decide to do that. But beyond that, and a, a little bit more time, you know, because this year we had, we don't plan to use more time, in other words, there's not a specific need, but for instance, this year we had Bobcat TV do the.
Training?